Board of Education meeting called to order at 6:02. Do you stand in the pledge?
....................................
And roll call, Jeanne DeCarlo.
Present.
Michelle Kaiser.
Here.
Matthew Buckley.
Here.
David Clifford.
Here.
Michael Hemsworth.
Here.
Bishop Kaminsky.
Here.
Aaron Roback.
Here.
Thank you.
The exits are to your left and to your right. And join us here. Can I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented and amended at this meeting? Matt, Mike, all in favor? Seven, any discussion? Ask seven zero. Subject three point one, can I please get a motion to accept the minutes of the January 17th, 2023 business meeting as presented? Shall Dave, all in favor? Any discussion? So ask is seven zero. Subject three point two, can I please get a motion to accept the minutes of January 17th, January 17th, 2023 business meeting as presented?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Subject four point one, statements and presentations. Sarah.
Good evening. Just before I begin this evening, I just shared with the board I do have an eye infection. So if you see me squinting or making faces, it is simply because of the bright lights in the room. It is not because I am glaring at anybody. In fact, I can't even see anybody coming into right front of me, so. Our student minutes report tonight, I just wanted to go over two items that are on the agenda. The first is the student calendar is on tonight's agenda for next school year. You'll see that school starts the day after Labor Day on Tuesday, September 5th. And the state rating day for next year is the last Wednesday in June, which is June 26th. That makes it a very long school year. So because of that school year, we were able to work in a winter break, a president's week, mid-winter recess, as well as a spring break with the return of the Monday after Easter off. Passover is separate from Easter next year, so there was a day for Passover. And then we also had feedback from families this year about the day before winter break. Parents wanted to get off a little bit early and head out for the weekend. So we turned the day before winter break into a half-day of school on December 22nd. The calendar does incorporate eight snow days in total, for use should we need them. And that is it. Two separate conference days at the beginning of the year prior to the start of school. Also on tonight's agenda, and we'll talk more about this in May or June when we have our retirements and our tenure celebration, but we do have Kathy Froger has turned in her letter indicating that she intends to retire this summer and for this to be her last school year. So I just wanted to recognize her briefly. She has been the institution here. She's taught kids and kids of kids, and I think potentially kids of kids of kids, even though she wouldn't want to talk about that part. But she, like I said, as a staple, has given a tremendous amount of herself to this district, and we appreciate her. So it is with regret that we accept her resignation on tonight's agenda. And we have a presentation tonight on budgeting for 2324, looking at enrollment, staffing, and the tax cut compliance. If I could have Assistant Superintendent Anne LaRoe come up to the mic, as well as Director of Curriculum Instruction, as well as Diane, Mrs. Connelly, who should be so kind as to go find Mrs. LaRoe, Assistant Superintendent LaRoe for me, as well as Director of Curriculum Instruction, Nina Polczynski, and Director of People Personnel Services, Amy Petrazzi. They are going to be the majority of the presentation for you this evening. So again, this is part of our regular budget presentation series, and it's on the current status of our enrollment and staffing, as well as the tax levy limit compliance. So Nina?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the presentation this evening. Presented here in front of you on the screen, you will see our enrollment numbers for the 2223 school year for K-8. The chart includes our in-district students, those are students here, our out-of-district students, those are our special education place students, our private school, those are religious and private schools, homeschool totals, and then a grand total at the very end. So as you can see, our grand total, including all of these different areas, is 488 for K-8. And then our high school enrollment, this is again, 2223 school year. These are, this chart indicates Warwick Valley High School, Chester Academy, private schools, our out-of-district high school placements, our homeschool numbers. And if you look at our Warwick High School, our total enrollment is 210 students. That equates to 77% if you're looking at percentages. For Chester, that's 34 high school students, that would be 13%. And then other would include our private, out-of-district, and homeschool, that would be 10%. Bringing the grand total for K-12 resident students to 759 students. This historical graph presented here shows our enrollment numbers across a nine-year span. While there was a slight decline, as you can see when it starts, our numbers for the last three years remain consistent and have pretty much leveled out from 2021 all the way through this particular school year. Okay, and then this chart is our K-12 enrollment. Again, there is a slight decline, with a deeper decline from 1920 to 2021. After the 2021 school year, it did stay pretty level. The high school enrollment has a slightly deeper drop because the graduating 12th grade class has been historically higher than the graduating 8th grade class. So district enrollment includes our in-district and our out-of-district special ed placements. Again, that grand total at the very bottom, that includes those two areas, and that's 709 students.
Good evening. This slide represents our English language learner population. Every year, I track over a period of time, starting on this graph, 2016, all the way to projections for 2023 to 24 school year. As you can see, there have been some ups, downs, steady amounts of students moving into the district. Our projection, in the 2021 school year, we had our highest at 17. We projected that same amount for this school year. However, prior to the start of this school year, four students moved out of district. In making predictions for the 2324 school year, we already know of two entering kindergarteners who will receive, or based on our projections, will need to receive 360 minutes of L services. And that's what we know about, so that would bring us with our current population, with those two, up to about 14, 15 students. And that's again, what we know about. Once the NICEISLAD scores, which are an assessment that all of our English language learners take in the spring, once those scores are in, we'll have a better idea of how many students we'll have, but this is again, based on historical data. Our K-8, 912 numbers here, this is our special ed demographics for this current school year for both in and out of district with IEPs, has remained consistent over the past few years. There has been an increase, K-8, in the amount of students who require 504 accommodation plans. We are attributing that towards the COVID-19 pandemic and an increase of diagnoses of students with ADHD and anxiety who require accommodation plans through Section 504. This is our broken down by grade level. So as mentioned, our total special education enrollment has not significantly changed. However, there has been an uptick of students in grades K-1 that have been classified as students with disabilities, and those students reflect a lot of preschoolers who were affected by the COVID shutdown and mandates. This is the graph outlining the continuum of services based on New York State ed regulations. Those continuum of services go as least restrictive as providing students with related services only, such as OT, speech, physical therapy, and counseling, all the way to a special class all day, not integrated for academics, but integrated for lunch recess specials, and that comes with or without related services. At the K-3 level, it's, the types of services are different than they are recognized K, sorry, 4 through 8. As based on regulations, students cannot get classified for certain reasons until grade 4, and so that's reflected in the types of services they receive. This reflects our staffing in the Student Services Department or PPS Department. We've remained consistent with 10 special education teachers for quite some time. Three are located at the elementary school, and the other seven here, grades 4 through 8. We have one occupational therapist. We contract with a .5 physical therapist. We have a one full-time speech therapist and a .6 speech therapist, two school psychologists, two school nurses, teaching assistants and aides. Current year, we have six teaching assistants that are servicing our special education students, and one teaching aide. That fluctuates year to year based on student need and IEP or CSE recommendations. Currently, for this school year, we have one full-time English as a second language or an L teacher, as well as a .5, which was an increased position this school year. And as mentioned in the earlier slide, based on numbers, not number of students, but actual minutes that students received as being L students, it could be that we might need that .5 to be increased to a full-time position next school year.
Okay, so here you will see the elementary school, our K-3 building. These are the 2223 staff numbers, again, based on enrollment. So we have a total of 10 elementary teachers, one Spanish teacher, two RTI teachers. We have one physical education teacher, one art teacher. We have a .6 music, she's shared between both the elementary and the middle school. We have one PLTW teacher, one guidance counselor, four teaching assistants, and three part-time recess aides. And then here at our middle school, our 4A building, we have a total of eight elementary teachers. We have one LEAP/PLTW teacher. He shares, he does LEAP and also teaches one section of PLTW. We have music, a .4, which is that shared staff from elementary, as well as one full-time music teacher in addition. We have one art teacher. We have two physical education teachers. We have one library media specialist. We have two Spanish teachers. We have one PLTW teacher, one guidance counselor. And then for our middle school, we have two 7th and 8th grade ELA, two 7th and 8th grade math, one 7th and 8th grade science, one 7th and 8th grade social studies, two RTI teachers, one teaching assistant, and four recess aides.
So in terms of staffing for 2324, we're looking at a very consistent program overall. We're not looking to add any positions at this time right now. We are not looking to reduce any positions. The one thing that we're looking at, as PPS Director Petrazzi stated, is that English language learner services. That if that does go up, we would have to look at and evaluate Spanish instruction in the primary grades. So the potential there, if that person then became, moved from .5 Spanish instructor to the other, meaning now full-time English language learners, we would have to look at the Spanish instruction. So what would that look like? So it would be a discussion with the board. So one option would be that exposure at the primary level could move to an exposure as opposed to once every four days going to class would be an exposure, being once a week or once every other week. Or if the board wanted to continue to make sure that all students receive Spanish once every four days, then we would have to look at adding staff. But that's a down-the-road conversation, that's not a right-now conversation. It's more based on needs and what happens with those elements, as Mrs. Petrazzi said. In terms of the organizational staffing, the one department where, that we're currently looking at is food services. As you all know, we hired a food services director this year, who then resigned in December for personal reasons. And so we are still looking at the structure of that and how to make that department work overall. So we are still in the process of figuring that out, and we'll continue to have that discussion throughout the budget process. But that's the one department where we're looking at current staff, maybe reusing, adding some additional work somewhere, moving people around. And with that, we move on. Before I move on to tax levy limit compliance, is there any questions from the board on anything presented so far from our directors?
I have a question. Other board, for me, what exactly is a 504?
A 504 accommodation plan is for students who have a mental or physical impairment that substantially limits their ability to access the curriculum or the building. So for example, a diabetic who supposedly has no special education positive or educational needs, however, they need nursing services, so they would have a accommodation plan. Or a student that might have ADHD, for example, doesn't have any academic or cognitive concerns, but might need extended time, may need some focus in a direction. So it folds under two umbrellas. The 504 accommodation plan, under the American Disabilities Act, where the students that have digitalized education channels under the IDPA, which is the International Educational Act. So it's two different umbrellas. One provides accommodations, whereas the other one provides programming-related services and accommodations.
But that number is a big number, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Is it contributing back to COVID?
A lot of it is attributed to COVID. A lot of it I've seen where parents are being more inclined to take their students to physicians to get evaluated, and that's how it changes in our department. And then we do comprehensive, but once we have that diagnosis and parent request, a lot of it is more based on parent request, we do some evaluating processes and quickly plan it to place.
We're also seeing increased medical needs for students as well. Whether, there'd be physical needs, physical medical needs, or like Mr. Petrazzi said, diabetic needs, asthma, or even
Food allergies.
Food allergies. Wheelchair.
That's all COVID-related?
No, no, that would not be COVID-related. Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board on anything presented so far? Thank you.
On your agenda tonight is the tax levy limit compliance form, which is required. We file it annually in March, and the calculation has two growth factors. One is CPI, which right now is about 7%, but it's capped at 2%. And it's the tax base growth factor, which is .23%. And if, when we apply this to our prior tax levy, if we want to levy over this limit, which we'll see on the next page, we would need 60% of the resident voters to approve. So our tax levy maximum increase is 3.78%, and that's composed of the, of two components. One is the increase in the growth factors of 2.24%, and one is a carryover from prior year, where the district saved the taxpayers money by not levying to the limit. So the total increase would equal $649,590. And to, as I've said, increase the levy above that limit of $17,818,000, we would need to go out for 60% approval rating from the voters.
Are there any questions from the board on the tax levy limit? Again, this is not the final budget number of what goes out to voters. This just, we'd have to name what the maximum amount could potentially be. Questions? Okay, from here, our next steps, we have a board workshop on March 8th related to curriculum instruction and people personnel services, technology, facilities, and transportation. Then we have another board meeting on March 14th, where BOSI tentatively will be presenting their budget. At the end of March, on March 31st, we'll have a committee meeting where we work out the final details of the Greenwood Lake budget, which would then be discussed at another board workshop on April 10th, where we go over the draft of the budget. And then the final budget would be up for adoption on April 20th, as well as the BOSI's budget vote and the property tax report card. Questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, principal, it's Mrs. Connelly.
Good evening. Friday, February 3rd, the students traveled to the middle school for the District Pep Rally, and while I thought Mr. Kamar would be here and presenting more on that, I was going to keep it brief. It was a wonderful event, and I just wanted to express my thanks to all who helped plan and execute this when I was holding the doors open for our students to re-enter the elementary school at the end of this day. All I kept hearing was, "That was so cool." So I really, really enjoyed the first trip up here to the middle school for many. This past Friday, we enjoyed the return of our annual sweetheart dance, which was a huge success. This event is a fundraiser for the 8th grade class, and I want to thank Allison Chapman and Kathy Gustavo for planning and organizing it. I also thank elementary and middle school staff and students who stepped up to help set up, run the craft stations and snack tables, and chaperone the dance floor. I'd also like to give a special shout-out to our new elementary PE teacher, Eric Frosty, for planning and teaching his dance unit to align with the timing for this event. Students were very excited when he led them in the maquereena and the shuffle dances that they had recently learned in PE class. And everyone at the elementary school will be continuing the sweetheart theme as we express feelings of friendship and kindness with the giving and receiving of Valentines from our classmates tomorrow. Also, this past Friday, we named our students of the month for January, who were chosen for their ability to set and work toward their New Year's goals. Students who earned this honor got to spin the prize wheel as their reward for being role models for the classmates. And I enjoyed hosting pizza with the principal in our new Laker Cafe booths, with a few of them, and the booths by the way are a very big hit. Everyone's really enjoying them. Moving on to this week's news, today marks the 100th day of school, and students celebrated being 100 days smarter by engaging in all kinds of learning activities centered around the number 100. Math lessons included creating 10 sets of tens, skip counting to 100, sorting and graphing sets of objects. Our ELA lessons focused on reading 100th day themed books and writing on topics like, what do you wish you had 100 of, and what life will be like when 100 years from now? And to make the day extra fun, staff and students were invited to dress up like they were 100 years old, or wear T-shirts with homemade collections of 100 items. And I invite you all to check out our Facebook page for lots of adorable photos from today that are sure to make you laugh. I'd like to give another shout-out to art teacher, Brian Hemsworth, who has been showcasing our elementary art pieces throughout the region. Winter landscape projects from selected third graders are on display at the Open Space Art Gallery here in the village of Greenwood Lake. Valentines for veterans are hanging at the Valleyview Nursing Home, and select artwork for, from students in grades 1 to 3, which was submitted to the Orange County Council for the Arts, being digitally displayed at the gallery and mall. Tomorrow, ES teachers will participate in grade level reviews of our mid-year benchmarking data during scheduled professional learning communities time. They will engage in the same I notice and I wonder protocol that our grade 2 students recently used when working in small collaborative groups to study the various types of communities. And lastly, we're looking to, we're looking forward to meeting with many parents for our mid-year parent teacher conferences this Thursday afternoon before heading off for our mid-winter recess. And that concludes the board from the elementary school.
Thank you. The pictures from 100th day of school today, the parents this year really outdid themselves. The eyebrows and the mustaches and the high pants and the purses filled with Werther's and you name it, they had it at the elementary school today, so it was fantastic. For our middle school update, we have Mr. Kamar, who is currently at a Shogun with a group of students, and so he sent in his video.
Good evening, good evening, school community. This is Principal Kamar, providing my principal's report for this evening's board bed meeting here from the Shogun Center, sorry, KMB at this evening's meeting. I am here with our students at the YES, the Youth Empowerment Sustainability Summit, and I wanted to provide an update since our last meeting and talk about some items that are coming up at the middle school. We've had a very busy month at the middle school since our last Board of Education meeting, with our district-wide K-8 STEAM Fair, was such a successful event, plenty of Mrs. Arafeld and her team of volunteers that put that together, and so congratulations to all of our students that participated, awesome event at the middle school. Also, we had the Harlem Wizards event with our PTA, a great community-wide fundraiser that was really well-attended, and just a great family event for our student school and community. Our second quarter has completed, and we also had our K-8 district-wide pep rally, our first time to have that since COVID, so it was really nice to have the entire student body district-wide at the middle school celebrating as one district. And it was a great event for our students and staff. Coming up, we will be celebrating our second quarter on enrollment, perfect attending students. In March, we will be having a school-wide reading event throughout the month of March, with more details and information coming out shortly on that. Also, on March 9th, we have our GW LTA fundraiser for the school, community, staff versus students basketball game, you know, a great, greatly anticipated event throughout the community. We're looking forward to hosting that on March 9th, and details have been shared out recently, and we'll be promoting that event heading into the 9th. Also, on March 15th, we'll be prepping for our superintendent's conference day. And that is all we have to report at this time from the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kamar. Well, the news broadcast from the Shogun. Okay, and then the board asked me to do a presentation reviewing the entire pre-K initiative history here in Greenwood Lake in order to answer questions, give background information, and also then later post this presentation to the website, as it has multiple links in it. So it is a bit lengthy, but it is all very important information, and I will try to move through it as quickly as I can. And I will try to move through it as quickly as I can. So first of all, what is universal pre-K? So universal pre-K is also known as preschool for all. And it's an opportunity for parents to enroll their four-year-old preschool-aged children into a pre-kindergarten program, that is full day. Children that are eligible are, must be four years old by December first. If more students try to enroll than there are spots, then these services are served on a random basis. And that's often called a lottery, you put kind of names in a hat and draw names out. The only students that are eligible for automatic enrollment are students that are identified as McKinney-Bento students. And those are student, that's the homeless act. That was the homeless act. Now, homeless doesn't mean living on the street. Homeless can mean many things according to McKinney-Bento. So it might mean moving in with grandma or grandpa or staying with a neighbor temporarily. So there's multiple layers there. But McKinney-Bento students are eligible for automatic enrollment. All other individuals are lottery-based. So going way back to two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, this was the first, it was part of the period of the initial push by the federal government regarding the importance of a pre-K experience. And they offered funding through grant applications. And it was a year-to-year process. Having it one year doesn't necessarily mean you had it the next year. Only a few districts in Orange County and across the state participated. Most of the larger, more urban districts did. And there were some smaller districts that went through the application process. This is the initial push by the federal government to see how UPK could work as a part of the K-12 educational system, kind of dipping their toes in the water. The board did discuss at that time the possibility of applying for the UPK grant, but at the time decided not to move forward. The data didn't support the need for it at the time, really. And then there were community concerns about the potential program impact. Fast forward to two thousand twenty-one, the federal government moved on to what is considered kind of phase two of an implementation process. So you move from offering it and you can apply to now offering to all, to anybody that wants it. So in two thousand twenty-one, the federal government announced that there was going to be a three-year grant with funds provided to all school districts as a part of an aid package through, and it would be funded through New York State. Any district that did not use the money had to submit a letter stating they would not be utilizing the fund. At that time, Greenwood Lake was awarded fifty-four hundred dollars per student for a class of up to twenty students for a total of one hundred eight thousand dollars. The federal money was funded through the state and listed as a part of the state aid allotments. Anything blue and underlined in the slideshow is a link so you can go and see that information for yourself. I'm not going to click them throughout this presentation, but once it's on the website, you will be able to. New York State at that time did multiple webinars and presentations, wanting to educate school districts and the pre-kindergarten providers in the state on what it would need to look like. It needed to be full day, what services you needed to offer. One big goal of the grant was to partner with local agencies. It didn't have to be in the school district. It could be through local agency. And then they frequently asked questions. Again, links to those items. So between then and today, if the funding was used by the school district, then the federal grant money could increase year to year. But if it wasn't used, then the federal grant money was not increased. In that same time period, the state of New York, the legislature began allocating its own funds into UPK for schools, into a specific UPK line. The state, though, and still is, only allocated money to districts that first used the federal funds. So the state's intent as a part of that initiative was to fully subsidize UPK by twenty-four, twenty-five, which is the year after the three-year federal grant was done. So their goal was, we had this federal money, but they knew it was only three years. So the state started adding money little by little over that three-year period so that by the time the federal grant money was gone, the state was fully funding what had been the hole that was left from the lack of federal grant money. In the interim, in addition to that automatic funding, there were also competitive grants similar to what was offered back in the mid-two thousand teens, called expansion grants. So that if you did apply for a program and because it's subsidized, it's not fully funded, but you wanted to apply to expand and offer services, you could apply for a sport called expansion grants. During this time period of the last few years, there's been a general message from the state that UPK will be an expectation in the near future. Each year, we get an email from them saying, you know, here are your funds, and if you're not going to use them, you need to email us. Again, one of the grant requirements was that a district must look to partner with local agencies to implement the UPK program. There's a minimum of ten percent of funding that would need to go to a local agency if there's one interested, up to a hundred percent of that funding. So again, in two thousand twenty-one, Greenwood Lake considered it. And at that time, the Board of Education decided not to pursue a universal pre-K program. First of all, we were in the middle of the COVID pandemic. We were, there was unknown about the financial aid amounts and what was going to happen. There was a lot of money being spent on the pandemic at that time. There was a threat of losing twenty percent of aid across the board. And so, and then also in the back of the board's mind, I think, was still a community feedback from two thousand seventeen. However, at that time, knowing that the pressure was increasing from the state and this was coming down the pike, the board asked me to meet with the owners of Little Buddies about incoming, discussing a potential partnership with them. So in spring two thousand twenty-one, I met with Little Buddies and brought them information back to the board. I shared links and resources about the UPK information, the webinars, the pamphlets, the documents that were offered. We discussed that UPK grant money could be used by an organization. However, there were requirements. The organization had to be a registered provider with New York State. And the organization had to provide a full-day program, five days per week. At that time, I shared with Little Buddies that the district would love for them to be that partner program, but understood that there would need to be time to make a decision about whether they wanted to be part of that plan to meet the requirements listed above. So we discussed several pathways to that. One was Little Buddies doing what needed to become an eligible agency in its current location, which meant becoming a registered provider with New York State, meeting all the safety and regulatory requirements. Option two was for creating a separate business, registering with New York State, by which they could then respond to requests for proposals by the district when the time came. And they could then operate a program and use space within our district for minimal to no cost. Third option that was discussed was Greenwood Lake creating its own program when the time came and hiring the employees of Little Buddies. And then lastly, the option of Little Buddies and Greenwood Lake running two separate programs, meeting different needs and desires as families. As families looking for a full-day pre-K program currently have to go out of area for the service. We also discussed at that time that UPK was going to be required sooner rather than later. And we wanted to make sure they had enough time to plan, adjust, and coordinate. And again, at that time, and as has been always in the past, we've always shared resources back and forth, including math program, writing paper, funding programs to ensure alignment. The students coming from Little Buddies always are very prepared and very quickly adapted to our programs. So even though we did not have a program here in district, we did do things here internally within the district to address needs. So teachers were beginning to share with us that there's an increasing number of students that weren't entering kindergarten as prepared that they had in the past. Their academic needs, their social needs, their kindergarten run-ins levels. The data actually supported these observations from teachers. So what did we do to respond to that? We had smaller classes sizes. We made sure that we had teaching assistants full day in the kindergarten classrooms. We added additional staff. We also added in the bridge into kindergarten program. And what we do with that is our, we take our kindergarten screening information, and we identify students that aren't kindergarten prepared. And we invite them to participate in a summer kind of camp program at the school to try to teach them the skills to be ready. We also have been running summer programs for our primary grades in those years as well. So kindergarten first versus the second and upper grades too. On twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, during budget season, the board of the district again discussed a pre-kindergarten program and the data. And at that time, the data did show a potential continued downward trend. But the board as a whole wanted to wait one more year post-COVID to examine the data to see if it was COVID or if it really was a trend. They did request at that time, though, that I give frequent updates and the administrative team give frequent updates throughout the twenty-two, twenty-three school year on how students were performing and to get feedback from the teachers. So we've moved to do that throughout the year this year, both quantitative and qualitative data. In August, we looked at the NWA MAP data trends since the beginning of time, which was, I think, about two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, when it first started here in district, with a primary focus on the COVID impact and kindergarten trends. Then in October, we did a presentation. And again, blue and underline means a link, so the link would be to the presentation itself. And then the video would be a link to the video in case anyone wants to watch it, specific to our response to intervention programs and how that works, how that runs and the data associated with it, numbers of participants, et cetera. In November, we did another presentation to Board of Education, this time focused more on the kindergarten data trends specifically. Then in January, again, a video and presentation linked here, I publicly announced that the district is suggesting that we move in the direction of offering one UPK classroom in the fall of twenty-three based on a demonstrated need over time. This is one sample of that, those linked presentations, one sample of the data that shows the history of years from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two. This is the kindergarten screening results over time, the total score. The higher the score, the better prepared. The lower the score, the less prepared they are. The one year that the district average was ninety-five, please note that there were only thirty-three students that year. So it was a very low number of students. On December two thousand twenty-two, we had the state education department reach out asking to meet because they have a goal of UPK being offered in ninety-five percent of school districts by next school year and a hundred percent of school districts by twenty-four, twenty-five. There are currently six hundred and eighty-six districts across the state that offer UPK, which is eighty-two percent. They indicated to me, and I didn't know this already, that Greenwood Lake is the only district in Orange County that does not currently offer UPK. They also discussed that the importance of using that federal funding because the state funding replaces the federal funding and you need to use the federal funding first in order for the state money to come in. At the same time, Senator Scoofus's office reached out to me asking to offer support in terms of implementing a UPK program. So in January, we had a meeting with Senator Scoofus. Mrs. Connolly was there. Board President Buckley, who was present at the time, also attended that meeting. And he sent us a statement, which again is linked for anyone that wants to see it. But he is very adamant that the state government foresees the future conversation, that districts are a pre-K through twelve structure, not just a K through twelve structure. He said the state money is going to be phased in over four years. And the amounts are based on the economics of the district, with next year being year three. They do not see any cuts coming. They actually see aid increasing in that line over time. And they are committed to giving all families the option of UPK across the state. So what does that mean? So in layman's terms, it means the state's not backing off anytime soon. It is soon going to be expected for districts to offer, similar to full-day kindergarten being offered. If you remember a few years ago, there were districts in Orange County that still only offered half-day for kindergarten. And the state came in and gave them funding and support and said, you know, you need to offer this. So based on the information that I just shared with you and that from the meetings that I had, it's important that we take advantage of this funding now so that the full cost doesn't fall to taxpayers all at once. If we do it now, then there can be some, the aid money, we can use some of our federal grant money and then minimize the impact to taxpayers. Plus a little bit over time. So in January, I again met with Little Buddies. We discussed that since two thousand twenty-one, I have received increased community interest from parents asking about pre-K, why we don't offer it, and others do around us. We, again, the increased needs of students, the academics, the social, the life skills, that there's been increased pressure from the state and the expectation to offer. I discussed that I had a desire that all Greenwood Lake states, I'm sorry, all Greenwood Lake students looking for a pre-K experience be served either by the district or Little Buddies. That there are families that want or need or must have a full-day program, as well as numerous families that cannot afford a program and then that child sits home until kindergarten. I shared numbers on students that are enrolled in Little Buddies, enrolled in outside programs, or have no pre-K experience. And I'll share that data in a minute. We revisited the options for partnering with Greenwood Lake School District in this initiative, where Little Buddies could potentially be the providing agency for pre-K and receive a hundred percent of the funding. They could run their program out of our building if their current space cannot be updated. In summary, we weren't looking to take away from Little Buddies with our program. We had a long discussion about targeting families not currently served by Little Buddies. And that, I think that there's more than enough children to run both programs. There are children that need pre-K, full day, and aren't in any program currently and can't get it locally here in Greenwood Lake. In short, universal pre-kindergarten has been an ongoing topic of conversation over multiple years, both internally at board meetings and with local agency Little Buddies. The data we have shows a clear need for pre-K. All eligible four-year-olds should be given the opportunity to attend a pre-kindergarten program regardless of their family situation or economic status. The fact is, the ones that need it most are not attending any program currently. And we have the opportunity to change that. So what would UPK look like in Greenwood Lake? Who would enroll? What will it cost? We know that those are the three big questions. So again, looking at the past three years of kindergarten, the total number of students, this is the number of students that indicated they attended Little Buddies. This is the number of students that indicated they went somewhere else for a pre-K experience. And these are the number of students that indicated they didn't have any pre-K experience. So in terms of the ones not being served here in Greenwood Lake, we're looking at an average of sixty-two percent of the students. So universal pre-K in Greenwood Lake would become an optional program for families. Again, children are not mandated to attend school until age six. We would have one classroom. Students would be chosen by a lottery. If there's more interest than there are spots, if there's more interest than spots, then individuals not selected would need to seek other arrangements, the same as they do now. It would be located at Greenwood Lake Elementary School in the same building as kindergarten through third grade. And that can fit in our current elementary school without restructuring. The classroom could serve between eighteen to twenty students, which is less than fifty percent of the population. Again, students not chosen could enroll in Little Buddies or other pre-K programs. Our goal as a district is to offer transportation to students enrolled in the program as well. We feel that's really important to make sure that all kids have access and not rely on parent transport, although that is not required in districts. So what we would do is we would put them on the bus with the kindergartners through third graders. So they would just become, and it would be able to run. So in terms of funding, if we had eighteen students, our funding would be ninety-seven thousand, two hundred. And the requirement would be one teacher and one assistant or aide. If we had twenty students, our funding would be a hundred and eight thousand. We'd have to have one teacher and two assistants or aides. The numbers that we have are based on the twenty-two, twenty-three amounts. In the meeting with Senator Scoofus, he indicated that he believes that our aide number will actually be higher for the school year. We just don't have that number yet from the state. And the pre-K funding is reversible at the end of the school year. So we spend it upfront and then they repay us at the end of the year. So in terms of cost to the district, if we did a program of eighteen students and the funding was ninety-seven thousand, two hundred, again, as I've referenced in the prior slide, approximate cost to operate would be a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So if you take the ninety thousand, so a hundred and eighty-seven minus ninety-seven thousand, please, ninety thousand dollars costs the district. We would look to carry over some title money, nineteen thousand, two hundred, into next school year to apply towards the program and then use Title I funds towards that program next year. That's twenty-five thousand dollars, so that the maximum budget impact would be forty-six thousand dollars. If we did the twenty-student class, that number would be a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, minus nineteen thousand, minus twenty-five thousand. The maximum budget impact would be ninety-five thousand. So ninety-five thousand would be a point three seven to point five five percent budget or tax impact, depending on what's done with the other budget numbers, right? So that's if we kept everything else the same. So that's if we kept everything else the same and just added pre-K, that's what it would be. But again, as with any other year, and those who are the board familiar with this, we kind of say, okay, let's, we'll put less money here and put more money here to minimize the tax impact, and that's what Ms. LaRoe was sharing earlier. Other costs associated with the UPK program, again, like I said, we feel it's very important to offer transportation, so there would be a small cost, because children, again, would need to be four by December 1st, and if children are on a school bus before age of four, they must be in a child restraint. So in order to do that, we'd have to put someone on the bus to assist with buckling, so it would be about $7,000 for a bus runner, and then we'd have to do a one-time purchase, which we could use funds from this year to do so, to purchase safety seats for the three-year-olds. And again, we would reallocate some Title I's, fund these from this year, to pay for supplies, furniture, curriculum, the bus safety restraints, and then carry over money to help pay for the TA. And doing this would help minimize the budget impact. I've heard a lot of that UPK is, you know, four-year-old sitting at a desk full day, and that's absolutely not what UPK is. Pre-K is focused on active learning through play. So what might a day look like? The kids might come in, do some active activities, kitchen, dress-up, pop a corner, developing the social skills, then move into some phonics and awareness and phonics through poems, songs, and more, do some writing, writing letters, recognizing their name, writing their name, have lunch, recess, again, being active, math and number sense, hands-on manipulatives. Then there is a quiet time requirement as a part of a UPK program. To some, that might mean enough, to others, it would just mean resting or doing a quiet activity, but just a mandated kind of quiet time. Then there could be snack, teacher read aloud, students in UPK would participate in specials along with the other students in the school, and again, some academic-based hands-on centers, and then end of meeting and dismissal. So again, not exact, but close to what a day might look like. And again, it would be designed specifically with something more active, with something that requires a little bit more studying or quiet work and going back and forth between the two. In addition, if we had a program here in school, students that don't require a special program, that need physical therapy, speech, occupational therapy, or a special education itinerant teacher, could be served here in district. Students are best served with these programs when it's incorporated into their learning day, and if we have a program here in district, they can do that. We did receive some email correspondence from the community. You have copies of them in front of you, as well as you received them over email. Just to share some quotes from each of the emails, or some of the emails that we've gotten, we did receive some saying that they were against pre-K. So one said a universal pre-K would be detrimental to our small community, to Little Buddies and the space at the elementary school. A second individual was concerned over the lack of clarity of the financial plans to support pre-K. I hope we answered some of those tonight. And then they were saying that if there's only 20 kids, then there's a chance that my child may not benefit, and then I'd have to be paying taxes and pay for an alternate program. And the answer to that is, if there's enough interest, you could eventually expand it. Right now, we're just looking at one, we just kind of want to see what the interest is, but I certainly understand that. And then the one person just said they don't want a UPK in September or ever. We also received several parent emails for pre-kindergarten, and these tended to be much lengthier emails, so I tried to capture little snippets from them. First one says, "We've been unable to find daycare within 20 minutes. We want our son to be involved in a daycare preschool program that's with the same kids that just wanted to attend a school." Second parent said they spent an enormous amount of time and energy taking their daughter to preschool over in Warwick. She loves the school environment, she loves participating in there, and she would have loved for it to be offered locally where her other children can, could attend. And then we had another district just kind of saying, "Hey, I really want to know about UPK, to see if I've heard it's coming, where can I get information?" And then this was one of the longest ones, and I had trouble paring it down, but I did. This parent says, "If I'm going to be completely candid, we're middle-class citizens, and we live paycheck to paycheck, and qualifying for this resource would be a huge benefit to our family." She goes on to talk about how her older children had pre-K and really benefited, and she saw it, she had a kid that didn't, and a kid that did, and saw a huge difference, and she's looking for her youngest to participate in UPK. And she says, she ends with, "I don't see the harm in investing in our little people. I feel like this would be a disservice to them." So there are also some misconceptions out there about UPK and about the board. So if more than 20 families apply, can you go beyond 20 students? So that goes back to the beginning where I said, no, so we can't really go beyond 20 students in one classroom, we would have to hold a lottery, and it would be random. The only exception, as I said earlier, is if a student qualifies under the McKinney-Bento homeless status. Will the board ask taxpayers before they vote, or are they trying to do this without taxpayer knowledge? So there's no such thing as a board vote on UPK specifically. UPK would just be a part of the educational plan and budget for '23, '24. The board is trying to hide this. The board would like to make sure everyone knows that they are fully transparent with the community, all agendas are posted prior to every meeting. Not only are board meetings open to the public, they are live-streamed for anyone to watch live. Further, there is a recording that is posted to our district's YouTube page and our board doc site for any member of the public to watch at any time. Taxpayers are now going to have to pay for four-year-olds to attend school. So kindergarten right now is universally accepted, though it's not mandated. It's the state's hope that there will be something similar for a pre-K, which makes a huge long-term difference for children. Also keep in mind that one goal of this grant is to fund a program using outside agencies, hence the requirement to collaborate with businesses such as Little Buddies. Some collaborate with YMCA or Head Start, and those agencies don't have the same salary requirements as public schools in terms of contracts with bargaining units, so potentially could be fully funded depending on the agency that partners with the district, if there is one. Will our taxes go up every year due to pre-K once this is in place? So what the board wants everyone to know, and what I think is important to everyone to know, is the board is very conscientious about tax impact. They have worked very hard, as you saw in Ms. LaRoe's presentation earlier, we actually could go up to 2.82 or 3.1, what was it? 3.78 this year. Even with, we could do that even without the 60% vote. And even with that being our limit, the board has still really tried to keep it under 2%, well under, not just under 2%, but well under 2% year after year after year, and I know that that is a continued commitment from the Board of Education. So they do that by prioritizing initiative, eliminating costs, and very purposely work to keep the tax levying momentum. They have a proven track record when it comes to that. There is a thought from someone that said students from other districts will take Greenwood Lake spots. So in order to earn a Greenwood Lake spot, residents would have to prove that they reside here in Greenwood Lake, as any child does at school. So there's no danger of a child coming in from another district. Plus, other districts in Orange County will have it now, so it wouldn't be. I shared this slide just as an example of the rate increase over time, and you can see that, I mean, we had a zero the year of COVID, because the board was very concerned about the community during that time. So well under 2% every single one of those years, despite the limits. People will move here just to attend pre-K. Again, we have parents emailing asking why everyone else has it and we don't, we're not the only district in Orange County left not to offer it. So they're already here, and that they're looking for it. It's going to be mandatory for all four-year-olds. So once again, I go back to, kindergarten isn't even mandated in New York State, the compulsory school age is age six, and UPK would be a choice that families could opt into. Too much time in the classroom. So again, as I went through the agenda, the day is charged with lots of breaks, active play, many states and districts even have three-year-olds attending full-day programs successfully. Further, again, if you feel it is not right for your four-year-old to attend a full-day program, this is an option for parents. We very, very highly recommend, anyone that doesn't want a full-day program, we highly recommend Little Buddies program. Once again, those students come in, prepare, they know what they're doing, we can take what they've done in Little Buddies and soar with them in kindergarten. So anyone looking for exposure but not a full five-day-a-week program, we will point them right down the street to the fantastic Little Buddies program. And I just want to end with this. Giving four-year-olds rich, fun learning opportunities stimulates their brains and builds their mental foundation for the entire future. 90% of a child's brain is developed by the age they reach six-year-old. Now is the time to give to them. Thank you. Any questions at all from the board?
Thank you for presenting that presentation.
So you mentioned the Title I funds, can that be used every year, or is it just the first year we have it?
So we do receive Title I money every year, it's very much dependent on our frame-reduced lunch numbers. The amounts went up this year because during COVID, everybody had free lunch, so people weren't applying for it anymore. So we think that that's going to come down a little bit, but we are allocated funds every year, and every year we sit down and we have faculty members, administrators, community members that participate in that discussion to talk about what we're going to spend that money on. So that is on my mind, that we would get every year, that we could say, okay, we're going to allocate this much to pre-K, this much to this program, et cetera.
And the in-house services, would that be extra, or would that be included in?
So the in-house services are paid for by the state, by the Orange County Department of Mental Health, those are things that are already happening, fully paid for and provided by outside agencies and providers, they can just now come into district and do that.
Okay, alright.
So that's no cost, again, no cost to district.
And so are we, I mean, is this just solely a board decision? Are we looking for one class for the next few years, or?
So right now, I'm just talking about, literally right now, in next school year, and I think that starting with one classroom is the right thing for Greenwood Lake under our current circumstances. I don't care. That is the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Hopefully everybody's still awake. I had to. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I have really much update, except still advocating for lunch for all. Like I said, you can go on the MissBowl's website, they have a link where you can fill out a, fill out a form that will go directly to your local legislator, letting them know that you would like them to continue to advocate, so that every student can get lunch for free.
Thank you. Opus.
What's going on there is, actually, the capital project, which is passed, is moving forward, they're looking at architecture of land right now, so there's probably some news coming down the pipe shortly to that. And once that happens, they're making financial plans that we're going to be presenting pretty soon. Thursday is, they're going up there to advocate with the legislature, they're going to be some local representatives and discuss concerns, a lot of that will be discussed in the last meeting about the issue with the electric busing, things like that, some of the specs they've formed up, which is coming up now too, is a potential issue, but that's something that's been concerned, they're going to discuss that.
My head is out on the Capitol Project, so I did advocate and ask at the last chief's meeting if it was possible to revote on paying for the Capitol Project, right? So we had, this board originally voted to kind of take care of the payments ourselves and let us figure it out. It failed in one or two other districts, and so therefore it then becomes a budget line item that kind of we get charged from both this year and this year, it ends up costing us more in the long run. So I asked if now that it's passed, and we know that it's happening, is it possible to revote on how it gets paid for? So they are looking into that, and I am advocating for that change to happen if it's possible. So that would be nice for us.
Thank you. Warwick High School?
I just wanted to let everyone, if you didn't know, last week, Warwick High School had their elective, their annual class elective fair, it was February 8th, held in the library. If your child was unable to attend, and anyone entering the ninth grade, or any current eighth graders through 11th grade, if they were unable to attend, you can, you know, maybe spend some time with them, and on the website, look up the different courses that are offered to the students. There are so many amazing and different classes, elective class will offer to them. Students will be meeting with their guidance counselors in the next coming weeks, you know, to discuss what their future plans are, and what electives that they would like to take. So if they're unable to attend that, we can go into the website and read about all the different course descriptions, and maybe help your child select their elective to make sure.
Thank you. Nothing for Jester? Facilities Committee, all the hardware is in for the, all the hardware is in for the doors, that's going to be, all the hardware's going to be replaced next week over the break at the elementary school. I think we have some board agendas on here regarding facilities that we're going to Budget Committee?
I'm sorry, I haven't been back to our, I kind of discussed everything, it was a judgment today, and then we'll move on to the next.
Audit Committee?
Nothing really, he did have a presentation today, so that's, um, so it's up.
Policy Committee? Is anybody here from the PSA? And then, Bill to Greenwood Lake?
At this month, we did have correspondence to foreign education via email, which I sent to them electronically, also we have to our comments.
Thank you, we all received this, thank you. Subject 6.1, privilege on the floor, anybody like to speak?
I would like to say thank you to Sarah, she presented all the questions that I asked at the last meeting, that I did not get any response for, but I understand you're not allowed to speak to me, so I understand that now. But Sarah has answered all those questions, and I appreciate that. I do want to explain, because it wasn't in there, about Little Buddies not wanting to be one of those businesses that are allowed to, I guess, bid for the UPK. We are not a daycare provider, so we cannot be licensed through the state, so Sarah's correct, when she asked us to do it, we told her we were not interested, and we're still not interested, because Karen and I ran a two-and-a-half-hour program very successfully, it's what we love to do, and we had no interest in running through the school district as a six-hour program. So I just wanted to clear that up, but Sarah's right, she did meet with us, she did ask us, and she did let us know all that information. I just wanted to say that Sarah also told me to not take this personally, and I thought, oh, that would be a piece of cake, because you've got to do what you've got to do, you're a board, this is what you believe in. And although I might not agree with everything, I do respect that, so I'm just asking you, especially since there's five board members on the panel, whose children went through Little Buddies, that although I know it's not your intention to perhaps negatively impact Little Buddies, I respect what you're doing, and I am going to, whether it works or not, I am going to continue to serve Greenwood Lake, just as we've had. I truly enjoy teaching all your children, I enjoy watching them through Facebook, watching them grow up, I consider you guys my friends. I mean, I had to fight for Little Buddies, because it's just what I love, it's just what I plan on doing. I just want you to know that I appreciate you saying that Little Buddies is successful, and it does bring in well-rounded and well-prepared little ones to kindergarten. I'm going to continue doing that, and I know, and you know, that we treat all of the children as if they're our own, that's not going to stop. I want the best. I, I want the best for everybody. I honestly did not understand it as clearly as I do now. And I'm just going to say, let's just, wherever the cookie crumbles, that's where it is now. I am here to support you. I appreciate all the information. And I just want to say I wish everybody the best, and I hope it works. I will continue doing two-and-a-half hours. You guys can do six hours, and I did see the plan. Makes perfectly good sense, and I wish everybody the best. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Okay, first, I just wanted to apologize for not thanking the board. Last meeting, I got sidetracked about the bike rack. Angel is anxiously waiting that bike rack. I, as far as what Tony said, that's what I have in mind. As far as the UPK, I do want to say thank you for putting the presentation together, while I do understand there's a need to target a certain group of children who do not attend pre-K at all or at the community. But when, my concern is when the program put forth does not include all the children that you're trying to target, you're not intentionally shutting down little, I want to say little, a private pre-K. It's a possibility. I know that's not your intention, and I know as a board you have to look at the education. I get that. But you have to understand that potentially that's going to happen, and there are going to be people who are going to get put in the lottery that are going to be having to do what that feedback said on that second one where she was upset that she had to drive out of the district. You're potentially doing that to quite a few families. So I just want to put that out there. So my questions are, how long is the lottery portion? Is it a one-year thing, two-year thing? Is it that dependent on how the program works for the first year?
We'll get back to you on that. Sorry.
Where's the UPK going? In the, in the elementarys then, right? Okay, you said how will they go get there? How you'll keep them separate on the buses? Well, this one doesn't work because you didn't answer the first one. I can't. My question was, if the classes get bigger, how do you, where is the space? I know you have space for one. I mean, that's something you're looking at. I know you have to be looking at it because you wouldn't be doing your job if you are. But you can't answer that. You can't answer the first question. All right. From a response to an email I sent as well as tonight's presentation, was, I'm just asking, I hope you can answer. Was moving the third grade to the third, 2024, 2023, 24, third grade to the middle school, a discussion? Was it ever discussed or is that? I'm not asking you if you're doing it. I'm just asking if it was discussed. Was that a start?
I believe that was addressed in the email response.
That it was never discussed? Not that you're doing it or not. Was it ever a discussion on that? I'm just, was it ever?
We'll clarify, but I believe it was in there that it was not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misread that. I'm sorry.
I mean, we'll double check.
Okay. You shared, going back to, you shared the previous meeting, your target is the ones that aren't coming from Little Buddies. They're coming from other areas or not going at all. For the 2020-24 school year, once the 20 spots from the lottery are full, how do you reach those kids who you're trying to target? If you're taking, if there's only 20 spots and say 11 of them come from people who are already putting their kid in pre-K, how are you reach? I, the lottery part is the problem. I don't know if that, that's a big problem. You're, if you're not taking all, how can you present a program that affects other people is what I'm saying. So there's, there's no way that you can target the kids who are not going to pre-K right now except for if they get in the lottery. That's what I'm asking. Is that true? That's what's, I mean?
I mean, you'll get all the answers. I mean, we're writing everything down. You know, obviously, we want to review it and provide you the information that you're asking, and it will be answered.
I think everything else.
We answered all Ms. Tony's questions from last time.
The same.
I mean, a lot of the information was in the presentation as well.
Not any, I don't think any of the questions I just asked were in the presentation. How are you targeting the kids who don't?
I will address.
Okay, I'm just, I did say some of the questions were answered. I'm not asking those questions. And then you're, you're planning on providing bus transportation for the UPK for anywhere they live, but not for everybody in the district. That's another thing. It's all in, like, you're going to provide bus transportation to all UPK kids, no matter where they live or not? They'll still be within the one-mile radius? Was that part of the presentation? Bus services would be provided?
No, we'll, we'll review that.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, yes. Go ahead. Can you just state your name?
My name is Taylor Aruda. I'm a parent of a small child looking at the UPK program. I sent in an email correspondence that was included and for the program, so I just wanted to get them on first. We can't take advantage of the Little Buddies program because we need a full-time program for our son. I have looked and toured all daycares in the area that I, that was available to me. Nobody has an opening for a full-time program, so we currently drive 30 minutes one way. He goes to daycare in Lawa, New Jersey, every day. We would love to put him somewhere in district. I understand the lottery situation. I would still like a shot at getting somewhere closer to district. Even if it means my taxes going up and he can't go here, I still have to pay for a full-day program either way. I would still like the opportunity, and you could be helping a portion of kids even if you can't help all of them right away. It looks like your state is, our state is trending towards doing this anyway. And it looks like that more funding is available now for you to take advantage of it versus waiting more time. And you'd be helping the kids that you can, hoping to grow the program to help more in the future. As a young family who just moved, we're very new to the area. We lived in three different counties in the state. Everyone had UPK. I didn't know that you could opt out of it. We might not have moved here. We thought that everyone was offering it. It is a big opportunity and something that we think should also be offered to kids in this district. Thank you for the presentation. It's nice to know the history, why you guys have opted out. And we look forward to hopefully the program is in place when we. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Subject 7.1, can I please get a motion to cast one vote to nominate Mark DeBogard and Mark Burder for two open seats on the Orange Bowl for BOS's board as presented? Aaron, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? 7.1. New business, subject 8.1, can I please get a motion to adopt the 2023-2024 student calendar as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 8.2, can I please get a motion to approve submission of real property tax cap compliance form? Michelle, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 8.3, can I please get a motion to approve the elementary school cafeteria kitchen capital project change orders as presented? Matt, Mike, any questions, discussion? All in favor? Subject 8.4, can I please get a motion to approve the final payment of R2C Contracting Inc., SNL Plumbing and Heating Corp., and Hush Maintenance Corp. as presented? Matt, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 8.5, can I please get a motion to create the position of automotive mechanic as presented? Dave, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 8.6, can I please get a motion to abolish the positions of head automotive mechanic and automotive mechanics helper as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 9.1, can I please get a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Kathy Crozier, kindergarten teacher, with intent to retire as presented? Dave, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? I'd just like to thank Mrs. Crozier for serving the community over the past years and wish her all the best, a lot, and her retirement. Subject 9.2, can I please get a motion to approve Michael Chris Turken as mechanic as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 9.3, may I please get a motion to extend the civil service probationary period of Tracy Mesick Cook as presented? Mike, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 9.4, can I please get a motion to approve the change from title Denise Bernard as presented? Mike, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 9.5, can I please get a motion to appoint Rebecca Carter as elementary teacher to provide intervention support as presented? Mike, Dave, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 9.6, can I please get a motion to appoint the following substitutes for Board of Education approved substitute rate as presented? Sullivan, Chris Misscone, Sampson, Vilman, and Vilma. Matt, Aaron, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 10.1, can I please get a motion to accept the CPSE/CSSE recommendations as presented at this meeting? Michelle, Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Subject 11.1, can I get a motion to return to executive session regarding negotiation pursuant to the Taylor Law for the admin and custodial of the units? Dave, Michelle, any discussion? All in favor? And after the executive session, there will be no action taken. Thank you very much for attending.